Board of Selectmen's meeting, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So Board just coming out of a manifest and paperwork review. Next up is review of items for consent. In this evening's consent folder, there is the minutes from January thirteenth and February first, accounts payable manifest for thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, and a school payment for nine hundred thousand dollars. Payroll manifest of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents. The appointment of George Iverson, George Ives, as full-time police officer, probation has been completed. A five K in family mile walk permit for May twenty-fourth, a five K LMS cross-country permit for April sixth, a veteran's tax credit application times five, I think, there's five of them in there. An abatement application recommendation from Avatar for map nineteen lot three hundred, an abatement application recommendation from Avatar for map nineteen lot two eighty-three, and the acceptance of a donated electric stove oven for Talent Hall valued at two hundred dollars, and appointment of representative and alternate to the National Regional Solid Waste District. And I think that's it in the consent.
So Chairman, I'll move to accept the items for consent.
Motion made by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Bork. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Motion carries five zero zero. Next is request for items for other business. Is there anything else we want to add to the agenda? The skid steer is a topic we've got to talk about, which is not on the agenda that I have right now, so.
It is.
It's on the electronic one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, under new business.
Thanks. First time I don't look at electronic one. Me and you, everything has to be electronic.
Everything's electronic, I'll teach you.
I didn't miss anything in the, no I did.
Nope.
So there's no other, any, no other business?
I had asked about having the issue of fuel payments put on.
Yep. And, and I had noted that under the informational items, if you still have questions, I'm happy to discuss further.
Well, why don't we, let's, if yeah, let's just, we'll cover it real brief, we'll cover it and see if that covers it. Cause I know he has a specific suggestion that I think we should, you know.
I'll bring it up under my other items then instead.
Alright, so that's been added there. Alright, and now we have inquiry on tax billing and timing. I believe we have a citizen to talk, talk to that, right?
Yes, we do.
Mr.?
Robert Dodge, name fifteen, Mason Drive.
Welcome forward. Have a seat in front.
Good evening.
Hi. Your name and address again if you could, and then.
Yes, Robert Dodge, name fifteen, Mason Drive.
And, but, sorry for the delay, I know we had to reschedule from last time, so.
That's okay, no problem, I understand, things happen.
So you asked to talk to the board?
Yeah, I was told that by the Tax Department that I needed to talk to the board about this. This is, it's a very small issue, basically a late fee of twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. I received my tax bill January thirteenth, Monday. I paid it in full on Friday, January seventeenth. Now, the post office cannot confirm when it was processed, no postmark on that mail. Simple matter.
Yeah, so all bills left here on November twenty-third, and almost, I mean, and almost every, I mean, I think.
Well, they, they should have reached houses by November twenty-third, they were mailed from Concord on the nineteenth, so factoring in the weekend there, we, that's why we, because it's why we set a payment date of December twenty-third, so.
And we, I know the payment rate was all on target as far as before the, before the bills were due.
In twenty-four years, I've always received bills on time.
Yep.
It just happens to be this one year, it came very late.
Yeah, I see from, from your rec, from the records, I mean, you've been, you received your bills, you paid it in the end of November for the December bill, and then the mid-year wind of July, June, end of June, beginning of July.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, you said that there was no postmark on?
No, I have it here. There's no postmark, there's no date, there's no stamp.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's all bulk mail, I suppose, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
So, yeah, I can't, you know, you have to take my word on it. I received it on Monday evening when I came home from work, I was very surprised, I said, oh, I forgot all about this. And like I said, it was the first time it's ever been late, and normally it gives me plenty, I mean, normally I get it probably before December. And I just lost track of, you know, because of the busy time of the month, and, and when I went to open it up, I realized, oh yeah. So I paid it as soon as I could.
Quick question for you, so, I know you stated to us that you, you know, you pay a bill every year on time, did it dawn on you, like after the first of December, that you haven't seen your bill?
No, it did not.
Okay.
And I don't know why, it's just, it just lost, I lost, you know, I just, when bills come in, I pay them, it just happened to, it did not dawn on me until I actually saw it, until I actually opened it up on that Monday evening.
So you received it on the thirteenth, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
How do you remember that it was the thirteenth, Mr. Dodge?
Cause I documented, because I went to the post office the very next day. I also called the tax collector and I said, you know, I just received this, inquiring, why did it take so late? So, that's why I know exactly when, and I documented those two things. And the post office said, no, we can't confirm by any means as to when it was processed. So evidently it got lost somewhere in the mail, I, you know, things like that does happen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Given the circumstances and the fact that the gentleman has historically paid his taxes on time, and that there's nothing indicated on that bill that would, there's no postmark, I would make a motion that the town, in this case, without prejudice, waive the late fee for this gentleman.
Okay, motion to waive the fee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Made second by Mr. Byron. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor waiving the late fee of twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll make sure the town gets that tomorrow.
Can I clarify that the intent of your motion is twenty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents?
Right, according to this is seventy-six.
Yeah, and my state may have gone off the.
Right, right, if, with my note, so the, the full amount as of February tenth is your intention.
Correct, the current, the amount currently assessed as of this date.
Alright, because the last thing I want is to clear it and say now I have twelve cents, so, alright.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Bye now.
Appreciate it. Alright, next is, we'll move on to the administrative report.
Okay.
New business.
New business. Uh.
Easy sign it.
Okay. First thing, this is a note that I had sent out to you all, I think, on Thursday, so just to clarify for our conversation, anybody who may be watching, the cover page story of this past week's HLN that anticipated a twelve-hundred dollar increase in people's town tax rate.
That was a little unsettling to me when I got home.
Yeah, yeah.
And you knew it was wrong.
And I know it was wrong.
Right, right, that is not.
You mean to tell me that's not true?
Believe it or not, that is not accurate.
You mean to tell me that was printed by the HLN? I'm shocked.
Never be shocked, anything.
It appears what happened is a, you know, each of our articles this year that have a tax impact show the cost of that, and so all those were added up, and then added on top of our current year tax rate. So basically doubling our town share tax rate instead of, those numbers start from zero.
And it didn't dawn on the reporter to call and ask?
Unfortunately, no, it didn't, so.
So what is the paper going to do?
Okay, so the paper had a correction on their website on Thursday, after it was brought to their attention. They will have a story in clarifying this week, similarly positioned in the newspaper, I've been told.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's where we are, that's where we are right now, I mean, we also received a apology from the, the reporter.
Right.
For misstating that.
And a free subscription to the future issues?
Yeah.
Free advertising.
I, I, I think they're going to throw that in too.
You could have my subscription.
So, just to clear, so it's, the way it should have been read, it was, if all warrants pa, if all articles passed, it was a thirty-seven cent increase over this year's tax rate.
Right.
So the average increase would be a hundred and eleven dollars for the average three-hundred thousand.
For the three-hundred thousand hour home, right.
Over this, over what you've paid in the past.
Exactly.
Not twelve-hundred dollars.
Not twelve-hundred hours.
I know that Jason and I know, I think Mr. Byron also posted on the boards, we've got it out on social media, obviously I got a phone call from the Budget Chair on Saturday going, what was this about? We're getting the message out, we've had a few inquiries through electronic email that responded back with some clarity. I'm hoping that that article does help change the picture, I, you know, people see it and that's.
Have we put it on the town's website?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, they went up there, you know.
On Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
By ten o'clock.
Yeah, this is how I spent my day on Thursday, was getting all of this kind of aligned and updated and all of that.
Did the HLN, I wonder if the reporter would consider doing a full spread article on what it takes to run the town, and really what's making up that number, and why we're asking for what we're asking for? In addition, help get the message out that the budget is been properly constructed, these are asking why we're doing, these are the things we're trying to do, and you know, these are the priorities.
Couldn't you have put it on that extra page that we're putting in the, aren't we putting the budget in, like we usually do?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do that too, but.
Couldn't you have put it on there with a big asterisk beside it, to let the people know, you know?
I, we're gonna do that too, but.
Yeah.
But you have to be careful what you can put on.
Right, we can't, we can't advocate in that.
You can only put on factual information on the voters.
That's factual.
Oh, I understand, and you're right, Pat, but I, I don't know.
Boy, I'd try it, oh, I'd try anything.
Alright, so.
Not anything.
So it is what, in a lot of ways, it is what it is, they're doing everything they can do to help correct the mistake, I know they're apologized fiercely, so.
Couldn't we get some signs made, remember, we did not make the mistake, somebody else made it in the paper last Friday.
I think, I think once they correct it a couple of weeks, I think it'll be alright.
It's supposed to be this week's paper, so it's fresh.
I do want to see how it unfolds, I mean, I feel, if this was, if this was the last week, the last paper in February, or the first week in March, and that was the cover story.
Yeah.
I would feel a little differently than.
There's time.
It's a few weeks out, and hopefully that gives enough time to get.
Meet your candidates, and I, I guess they have one, don't they?
I would assume they are, and I would say that the school deliberative session, the school, in their presentation, they did talk about the mistake, the error, and explained it, so, cause they didn't want that influencing their side too, unfortunately.
Right, and, 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 you know, I think they, the school was concerned about, I actually have to give the school credit, they, they put it on my radar screen before I got to it in the morning.
I think the school got it, like you said.
Yeah, yeah.
The school pulled up before we did.
Yeah, the, the school saw it, and, you know, I heard from the business administrator and the superintendent pretty quickly, and we started sort of moving in tandem to get it fixed, so.
Maybe it was okay.
Okay. Any other questions we've got in that? Is, if there's, is there any suggestions on anything else we can do to get the word out? I mean, I, I think we're going to put another article up on ours, on our webpage, and on Facebook and stuff like that, try to explain the budget a little more clearer, but I don't know if anybody else has any other suggestions.
I think it'll be fine. I think it'll work it out, so.
Okay. Next?
Well, actually, before we go there, I'm going to jump to the voter guide insert, just real quickly.
On top of it.
Since we're, we were talking about that insert.
So we have the unique experience of having twenty-three some odd water articles and.
I, I can't fit them all on one sheet, we have too many articles, so I'm, I'm basically looking for a quick overview before I write all of the content on this, because we have a couple different formats here, I have format A that.
Very bold, right?
Very nicely has all of the articles on it, leaves us some space to explain at the bottom, and.
Can it be printed bigger, softer?
Well, and here's the trade-off, to fit it on this sheet, the print's a little hard, economical. The print is economical on this one. If we migrate up to a double, a double sheet, a double eight and eleven by seventeen sheet, then we can actually do most, now, what was, what was, I was hoping we could do is fit the ballot on the outer liner and put our, our own material on the inner liner, problem is I am one ballot page too, too long for that, so, you know, what we're looking, you know, cause the other thing that I'm trying to figure out is, you know, what's the best format for people who do their homework, who bring this with them to the polls, this you may need a magnifying glass, it's all in one sheet, here it's a sheet plus one. And then I can just kind of play with the ways we lay them out, we, you know, are you do a page, an explanation, a page, an explanation.
Have we ever done a trifold before?
I don't know if we've done a trifold before.
I could have told you to do the trifold at one time.
I think we did, quite a while ago.
But, um, take a look, and understand that I threw the ballot pages on there quickly, so don't, so, you know, if they're not lined up perfectly, then.
What's, what's the cost per each one? Cause I know, my concern with a double page is that the second page will get lost, and it's stopped, it's not going to be guaranteed all four pages to be in there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the second page, I mean, obviously your printing cost will go up, because you're going from one double-sided sheet to two double-sided sheets. The stuffing cost should remain the same.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I sort of like that, it's just.
I like the format of that, cause I think it's, it's one sheet, for me, the, the writing is not a problem.
Yeah.
But I got progressive by vocal, I haven't seen anything. But I think, you know, my concern with two pages is that not everyone will get the two pages, keeping it in one page at least guarantees that all the content will get over there, there's not a lot of room though.
Now, now, look at that, Jason, right, the A sample, you've got a lot of room.
That's for, that's for all for explanation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, cause what I was trying to do was like, I can't make, if I make the ballot larger, then I have no space to.
Is your intent to put the, you're going to keep the ballot as one section, and then you're going to do all the explanations, you're not going to break the ballot up and explain it underneath the ballot question, right? We can't do that, right?
You can.
I could, if you, I, yeah.
Somehow we've got to disseminate that it's, it's explanation versus the ballot question, but I do think keeping it together helps people keep their thoughts together versus having it on separate pages.
Mm-hmm.
The budget alone will be a page, a page on itself, you know, you should have put the kind of details around that and why.
This is as bad as a telephone bill book.
Why you put estimated twenty-fourteen tax rate, three dollars and fifty-eight cents?
Because that's the impact of the budget article.
Yeah, that's what this whole budget.
Remember, we start from zero, and the impact of that article is three fifteen, and thus there it is.
A thousand?
Yeah, and that's the confusion of, it's not on top of your current tax rate, it is starting from zero.
This is all on top of that, right?
I, I underst, mm, okay.
You'd rather say put four cents? Or whatever the, if you need to say four cents, right?
Yeah.
Oh, six.
Because they're going to say, well, three dollars.
So, does anybody have any direction?
Byron? Do we have a possibility of getting bigger paper?
Bigger paper.
They do make bigger paper.
That's eleven by seventeen, right?
Yeah.
You can get bigger paper.
Will it still, will it fit? I guess it would.
Um, I need to find out with production capabilities of how large they can go and how large they can stuff in.
Who's they?
Whoever I get to, A, whoever I get to print it, and then B, would, does H O N have a stuffing limit?
Well, H L N's going to, going to charge you stuffing fee anyway.
Right.
Whether they print it or somebody else prints it, so the, the question would be, if you can get a bigger sheet of paper. You could potentially put it all on one sheet, and then depending on how you folded it, or whatever, it could fit quite easily in there.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing to be aware of is that if you make this into a couple different sheets, it may be a good thing to put the explanatory portion on a separate sheet, and I know that you talked against that for a moment ago, but the problem you have is people bringing that into the booth with them, they want to be able to bring into the booth with them a sheet so that they can go sit at home and say, oh, think about it, and check off how they're going to vote, or whatever. So the question is, if they bring into the booth with them the explanatory portion, then that's really compromising the booth, because you're only supposed to have, it's supposed to be a clean booth when you go in, is what I'm saying.
It's supposed to have what?
Clean booth, yeah. You're assuming they'll leave it behind?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess you can look at it both ways, if somebody checks off the sheet, then that's contaminating, quote contaminating the booth, so.
Right, there's a completed, right, there's a contaminated, there's a filled ballot, which is arguably worse, sample ballot is arguably worse than.
So it sounds like, let's see if we can get a larger pa, a larger sheet, so that when you do the trifold, it's actually, you know, eleven folded.
Do they have to leave as much space at the top and as much space at the bottom with nothing on it?
Well, there, there will be stuff at the bottom on that, on, everything that's blank is where we write our explanations, I just haven't written the explanations yet, because I, I don't know whether I have two pages or two paragraphs to work with, but on that single three-fold one, everything at the bottom and the open panel at the end would be our explanations. The larger sort of two-sheet ones, our explanations would be either opposite or at the end of that. It's, it's the length of the ba, it, well, it's two things, the length of the ballot that's hurting me, and then unfortunately, the order of the questions means, it, cause on the, one of them, on the two-page one, I can't scoot up the, the last, there's extra space at the bottom, but the next ballot question is too long to fit into that space.
And your ballot can't be, I mean, an article can't be split?
Well, I, I, I was trying not to split up for, yeah, because I think, you know, the confusion of.
The number.
Yeah, I mean, now, the, the other wild card in all of this is, we are, use the ballot and the image of the sample ballot on the handout.
Yeah.
If we throw that idea out altogether and just use the text of each article, we can probably make something that's more user-friendly on one sheet, we, we're, we're losing some layout space because we're making it look like the ballot. Do you think that it looking like the ballot with the little yes, no, is important, or having the text would work?
I'm torn, because I've had people say to me that they, they like that, because they're familiar with it, it's a familiar look.
Mm-hmm.
They can associate the warrant with the ballot.
But don't you, the explanation should go directly after the warrant article?
That's what I, that's what I do.
Yeah, I think so.
I put it in italics right after each warrant.
Yeah, I just changed the format, I, I like it that way too, but I think, you know, right, but I think Frank brought a good point about, you know, potentially leaving it behind and contaminating the, the booth, but I think that's up to the, the poll workers to make sure it doesn't happen, right, in some cases.
Yeah, I mean, what, the way, layout we've done in the past has had basically the ballot on one side and our narrative explanation on the other side, then you flip it over and you had ballot sheet and our explanation next to it.
Right, it won't work this time.
So.
It sounds like, it sounds like we're, look for a larger paper that we can potentially write it in a bigger.
Yeah, that would be better.
Okay, what's your point of view? What?
Go small.
It's going to cost more.
Well, I, I, you know, my take on it is, is that having more than one sheet, potentially the other second half of the sheet won't get there.
Right.
Keeping it as one sheet guarantees that all the content gets there, but.
I'm afraid they wouldn't read the second sheet, too.
Well, that's the other possibility too, I think, from bringing it in as trifold, I think Frank's idea of potentially going with a bigger paper stock.
Okay.
That would allow us to maybe fo, still fold it in as trifold, but it'd end up being close to an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper.
Maybe a better way to do it. Okay, alright, so, larger paper, but preference overall is one sheet over two sheets, is that, was that what I'm getting?
That's certainly my opinion, it sounds like.
I would agree.
Is that, okay.
Sounds like that's a.
Then I can make that work and lay that out somehow.
For your information, if you want to get an A, an A four paper sizes, eight and a quarter by eleven and three quarters.
That's what the regular.
But, but that isn't going to do you much good, because it's pretty much what you've got.
That's even smaller.
Uh, A three is eleven and three quarters by sixteen and a half, A two is sixteen and a half by twenty-three and.
That'll get you on the.
And it's three eights. Yeah, the, the A two size will be.
I think that, you know.
Or you can go A zero, which is thirty-three by forty-six.
Oh, not bad.
You must have, you must have at least a friend you're dealing with, I found what they're capable of doing, cause that's going to be the other draw, right, whether they can actually print that size paper.
Yep.
And then trifold it. But, yeah, I've seen stuff done, you know, A two, A three, that looks halfway decent, so.
Okay.
I mean, you get, you go, you go to the A three, A two, it almost looks like you're getting to, you know, a large softcover book at that point, you know.
Okay, that's fine, that's, thanks, that helps.
And what's the deadline to getting that done and, done and, cause we got to approve it, I assume, at least to understand what the, to help, you know, the content is. What are you shooting for, for getting it ready for print?
Uh.
When does it have to get out there for stuffing?
Ideally, you have it in, let's see, votes the eleventh, so you'd have it in the Friday before that, which is the sixth, which means.
Jason's far away.
You have to have it done by the end of this month.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I.
Three weeks, right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you all want to take a look at it at a meeting, we'll have it done by the twenty-fourth, I mean, I'm, I'd like to have it done sooner, sooner than that.
Well, I would, I would, I would get it done sooner, get it out there on the site to let us look at it.
We don't have to take a formal vote to approve.
No, I, well, I don't think so, but.
No, we don't, why would?
It's the office trying to help people understand it, but let's get everybody's, you know.
Yeah.
Let's get it out there sooner or later.
If it's factual information, I, as far as I'm concerned, I'll take a look at it and.
Sure.
Get it, just get it out there.
Yep. I agree with that. Alright, next, skid steer.
Skid steer.
So, just as a heads up, I think Jason and I caught between, I did notify the board that the recycling center suffered a failure of the skid steer, it got hauled out on Friday, I think it was.
Friday.
They rented a unit for the weekend, we just got our estimates in for the repair, so, would you like to?
Sure.
Provide that update?
Uh, problems with the hydraulic system, cost of repair is at least sixty-five hundred hours for repairs. Uh, problems with the hydraulic system. Cost of repair is at least sixty-five hundred hours. For repairs. The comment from Chapel Tractor that was passed on to Dave is, it's not the death, but it's close.
I think what's important number two is if we, was it last year's budget, we requested the funding to replace it. Because it was already six years old at that point. It's, it's trade-in value, I think, was eight thousand dollars they were gonna give us for it.
Mm-hmm.
I think we asked Chapel what its trade-in value is today?
Yep. Uh, Dave got a value today of twenty-five hundred hours.
I assume that's because it's broken.
Right.
So add, so, so it's, you know, let's assume we'll get six thousand dollars for it if it was functional. I guess the question now is, do, does the board perceive with getting it repaired? Do we, are we go back to the original plan and try to get replaced? Because it's Irish, it's, you know, because the six five hundred dollars is probably not gonna be the last piece of it. There's probably more to come.
If we were to lease purchase a new one. What was the, what would be the lease purchase price per year?
Uh, you would probably be looking at, uh, if you did a three-year, probably. If, if you did three-year and finance the whole thing, you're probably looking at thirteen, fourteen thousand a year for three-year. Yeah, I'm using, I'm estimating a ballpark price of about forty thousand dollars. You know, the price we had fall. Of twelve was thirty-seven thousand. So, you know, this is, this is unraveled from, you know, uh. Going to the shop, not knowing whether, you know, we have stuff that breaks all the time for some reason. So, you know, sometimes it's a, it's a small repair, sometimes it's not. So, you know, um, when we found out later today what the number was, and we started getting some ideas in motion on this. Um, you know, Dave is gathering, um, quotes for replacements now. Actually, I wrote three and then we ended up with four. So we're looking at Bobcat Case Caterpillar New Holland. Um, we'll have a little bit of the trade. Uh, you recall that the plan we had last year, we had about, it was about thirty-four thousand. So my forty may be a little high. But I just.
You would ask for seventy-five hundred dollars a year.
Right, I mean, I, you know, not having anything in hand, I'd rather not undersell it and then, you know, come back with a surprise. Um, we had a grant in hand last year for five thousand dollars of that when we chose not to go forward with it. That grant was, uh, you know, returned, the eligibility was returned to the pool. We may be able to apply for that again.
As I was saying, those are.
Those are usually, I mean, I don't want to count on it, but there's a high likelihood that we would be able to see that to swap out some part of the future cost on this. Um, the other piece to bear in mind is from two thousand twelve, we set up a, uh. The article, and I think this was part of the, the cushion that the board thought last year about as well was. Um, we, we set up the Public Works Expendable Trust Fund. Uh, one of the purposes in that fund that, that was. Um, is replacement of capital equipment at the solid waste facility with a value greater than five thousand dollars.
What's the balance?
Twenty, twenty thousand. We haven't touched it. This is the fund we set up for, it, it had a couple, big picture had a couple purposes. It had, um, winter maintenance, it had, um, snow removal related costs.
Right.
Um, it was, uh, solid waste fees.
Select miner agents to expend.
Select miner agents, solid waste fees, and then capital equipment.
Where do you see that it says capital? I'm looking at your sheet here and it says that the trust fund from two thousand twelve.
Yep. Uh, if you read the section, if you look at my notes, the part that is bold, this fund can be used for the payment of solid waste disposal fees. In excess of the annual budget appropriation for that purpose, as well as the replacement of capital equipment at the solid waste facility with a value of greater than five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, you know, in, in my mind, at the time that I wrote it back in twelve, we weren't looking at skid steer. But one of the other concerns that I had was, hey, if one of those balewars goes down, we can't operate. So that was part of the rationale.
Now, if we can. If we were to vote to replace it through a lease purchase, uh, taking the money from the fund for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how could we offset, or could we offset that with either the proceeds of the old unit? And/or any grant that might be received, or does that have to go into the general fund?
Uh, what we would probably do is, um. Okay, the, the, the proceeds of it, I would probably net out of the purchase cost.
So, the, the reason I am asking Jason is because maybe it's not prudent to take it from the fund this year. But start next year, use this year's lease purchase, use the trade-in value if we could. And any grant money to offset the, the first year of the lease.
I, what I'd suggest at the moment is a hybrid. Based on, I, I think what you're saying makes some sense. Let's assume for a moment. Just take round numbers and say, we need twelve thousand dollars towards replacement this year. Okay? Um, the decision in the, in the shorter term would be to withdraw six. From the reserve fund and six from current year operating budget. At the moment. Then we would look at the ability to, um. Depending on how the trade works, you know, if we go some other place or sell it another way, to bring that money back in. Uh, and then the possibility of the grant. You can always decide later to take more. Out of the capital reserve fund if those contingencies don't come forward. However, once you take the money out of the fund, the only way to replenish the fund is going back to town meeting. So I'd rather take part of it now, see how the rest of the situation plays out to determine whether you want to take the whole thing. And then, you know, alternatively, depending on how all those things happen, you're gonna have to replenish the fund next year. Uh, you know, and some of it may be of things lapsing to fund balance and asking for town meeting to appropriate it next year. Whether it's grant or, you know, honestly, in, in, in that budget, we sometimes overperform revenues. Uh, because you have a good quarter of sales and I can't automatically move that money over. But we could kind of informally earmark it.
What are we selling? The recyclable?
The recycled material.
Jason, it's sort of hypothetical, but we have, we have other leasing that potentially could happen this year.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming town meeting goes one way or the other. Can we, can we float the whole thing until we know what our, that exposure is? And would it be better to wait to kind of group it all together? If, if in fact, and maybe still.
Yep.
Even if, if it wasn't.
Oh, so.
Go ahead and purchase the replacement, float it out of our, our, we have in funds now. And then, once we know what our, what our leasing capabilities would be come after town meeting, because that's really the big, that would be a big question there. Then put it all back, right?
Yeah, but I don't know that you can put it back.
I, yeah, we could probably put it.
No, put, if, don't, don't take it out.
You can't put it back into an operating budget.
No, don't take it, don't take it out of the fund. Take it out of our operating budget today.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying. You can't replenish the operating budget. I'm, if I'm not mistaken, even, then if you take it out of a fund, you can't take it from a fund to put it in your operating budget.
No, but that's not what we're saying.
I was just leaving in the fund. Don't touch the fund. Take it out, use, use our funds that we have in our operating budget today. When we figure out what we can do from a leasing perspective, just re- credit back those funds.
To what?
To the operating budget, not to the fund, to, to our actual operating budget. We have an operating budget that we.
No, no, I, I understand John, but how, if, if you start paying out of the operating budget. How can you credit, what are you gonna credit back?
So if we take it out of equipment purchase, we put it back in equipment purchase.
Put what back?
The least of dollars we get back from the lease. If we can convert, convert the purchase into back into a lease.
All right, here, let, let me, let me.
We're in two different.
No, okay, no.
We've done it before, that's why I was.
Let me, let me explain. What John's, what John's suggesting is, um, let me back up step. Traditional vendor financing, you know, as we've learned in the past, you're paying six, seven percent interest.
Right.
What we've learned by doing bank financing, which we did on Jack's truck and we did on the last, uh, set of police vehicles. Is we can drive that rate down to about three percent. It's a lot cheaper for us to do bank financing.
Right.
Than to do vendor financing. Uh, the bank financing is only available to us at a borrowing level of over a hundred thousand dollars. Cumulatively, okay? Uh, problem we have is that. Um, just doing this vehicle or, you know, we've talked about doing the police vehicles, uh, in the future, if that all comes together. Those two purchases separately are each below the hundred thousand. If there is a way to aggregate them at some point in the future. Um, that could get you the lower financing. The question, and I don't have a good answer to that, um. On the technical piece, whether from the bank end or, you know, I, I'm okay, I, I think I'm okay on our end, Brent. I'm more concerned sort of about the bank end of it, um, and also dealing with the uncertainty of it. Because I can't anticipate, if I anticipate one and then I don't have the ability to swap it back out, I have a problem too. So I need to figure all that out. But the theory would be, in some form or fashion, we cover the cost now of the full skid unit. If we have the opportunity to swap out and replace those funds, whether self-funded or short-term vendor-funded. From whoever we go with, to swap out the cheaper bank financing later, we would obviously swap out the cheaper bank financing. Um, you know, I think that that's the piece to try to figure out and that, you know, when. And I, and I don't have all the answers for this because, you know, I got the order of magnitude of problem back from Dave at three-thirty today, so.
Well, I, I think we, until we get more information, I would table this, we'll allow them to rent, we want a replacement, but.
But the renting is gonna cost, just the weekend alone costs a hundred and fifty bucks. So if we continue renting at that rate, let's assume it's.
But I'm not comfortable saying.
Well, we have to buy one anyways. The question is, is how do we fund for it? At the end of the day, you know, my thought is that we have to. It's a, it's a, it was an eight thousand dollar trade-in value unit now, it's gonna cost us six five hundred dollars plus to get it fixed. It's got no value.
If, if we, if we do nothing, we'd have to come up with that six to five hundred dollars.
Right, and so if we can do short-term vendor loan and just get it that way and then pay off that loan and convert it to a better loan. That would be an option, I would think. But I don't think, you know, at the end of the day, we still gotta do something.
Is there any diagnosis as to, I haven't heard what's wrong with it?
Hydraulic.
Hydraulic system.
Okay, is it possible to get a rebuilt one or reused one? And what's the cost for that?
I, I, the vendor, I, I don't know. The vendor who does all of our work has looked at it and said, based on what we're seeing. It is at least sixty-five hundred dollars because your hydraulic system has failed. That is as far as we took it today because of that price tag, running up the tab anymore.
Yeah, it does make sense.
Didn't, you know, that was a good place to stop. Um, I mean, if we want to go and study. All of the repair options on it, happy to do that. Um, I just, you know, my, my anxiety was. When we go from something being a routine repair of five, six hundred bucks to sixty-five hundred bucks. That's a pretty good circuit breaker point to say, should we be putting any more time and effort into it?
I think another thing we need to look at is, this is a piece of equipment that he can't function without this.
No, he can't. And, and even with the thing he rented the other day, because he couldn't find an excellent skid steer, is not optimal for what they're trying to get done down there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would ask the question as to what it would cost if we could rebuild. I mean, if we can get it for twenty-five hundred bucks, that's something else again. I have no idea. I'm asking the question and that's about it. I agree with you, if it's gonna cost us sixty-five hundred bucks. Adding sixty-five hundred bucks to a piece of equipment that's worth twenty-five hundred, you're upside down nine thousand dollars. And you're upside down roughly three thousand dollars in terms of the cost. I personally would take all of the money out of the, uh, the account. And, and do it that way rather than, um.
On a lease, right, lease purchase?
Well. Well, use, use the, uh, we've got a capital fund. If we're not gonna use the capital fund, then why do, how did we create it?
But you don't have enough.
Then you take the residual out of the budget.
Okay.
That's the only way you can do it.
I mean, I would like to see it come out of the fund also, uh.
Because what we're gonna be doing by, by, by borrowing this, we're gonna end up paying an interest on it. And whether the interest is six percent or three percent.
My, my, my only concern about taking the money out of this fund right now, right now at this instance. Is we have a snow problem right now too. And so what happens if we, what hap- what happens if we receive the default budget? Will we have enough funds to pay for this pet, this winter so far and what happens next winter? This is our cushion for this, for the snow, the snow time too. Taking all that money, that's why I said, my, my, my thing was, can we delay? We may have to dip into this fund anyway. But can we delay it by just floating it within, out of our balance?
But Jason, you said the original estimate you had, it was about seventy-five hundred a year for lease purchase, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, it was based on a purchase price, uh, but let's not use that number. Let's base it on, it was based on a purchase price of thirty-four thousand.
Correct.
Which, that was in the fall of twelve. So I'm assuming that price will be higher to some degree.
Well, it's also minus the eight thousand.
And, and the seventy-five hundred came from, we had an eight thousand dollar trade and we had a five thousand dollar grant. So there was thirteen, thirteen hundred hour, uh, thirteen thousand dollars that we don't have in hand right now. So, the, the question that, um, you know, to selectman Byron's point of, okay. We wipe out the, the fu- the, uh, the reserve fund. Uh, there's still another fourteen thousand or. Twelve thousand dollars somewhere. That's assuming, you know, I, price hasn't changed a whole lot. We get twenty-five hundred dollars in trade. Um, you know, I gotta make up twelve thousand dollars someplace. Where's that coming from?
As I said, you take it out of your budget.
I don't know if we're gonna get twelve thousand, I just don't know if we're gonna get twelve thousand dollars out of the budget. I mean, I think like you said, I thought it was okay to float the purchase for several months till we figure it all out, but.
I, I. So, to me, I mean, if we, if we're making a deci- well, and this is a separate issue that I don't want to really go down, but. We've got a fund, we constructed a fund, you know, maybe the fund wasn't budgeted to the correct amount. That's something that next board can debate. But at a certain point in time, we should be using the fund to, for its intended purpose. And one of the intended purposes was to address exactly what's happening right now. What's gonna happen in December, November of next year, of this year? I can't tell you. And if you can, great, let me know.
Well, my, well, my only, my only point was, if we take, if we use, we take it out of the line we already have money into. We see where we're at come after town meeting in mid-year, we can still pull the money out of that fund and replace the money that, that came out of the purchase. For the same reason, we're just delaying executing off that fund so that we know that we're okay. Because I agree, maybe the funding is just not right. I don't think we expected to replace a piece of, I don't think we, I don't think we expected to replace a piece of equipment that we already planned on trying to replace two years ago. And was then able to successfully get it done.
I, I, I'll tell you, my view on capital equipment on this was, the thing we were replacing was a vertical bale ore to the tune of seven thousand dollars. That was, for what it's worth, that was in the back of my mind. That's not to say, don't use it for this. Um, it, and, you know, I guess I'm, I tend to be inclined to say, in general. We should be, hope, I mean, in all of these things, ideally you want to fund as much as you can out of your current year budget. Um, and not, you know, and, and not use, and, and you have the reserve there for the comfort. So you're making a decision, knowing you're not making, you know, a decision for which there's no money. But ideally, we're funding the majority of it. Out of an operating budget and then using the fund for that purpose because it gives us the escape.
But, but what you're arguing about now is going and getting a bank loan. And you just a moment ago said it's gonna cost us eighty-five hundred dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
And my proposal was gonna say, instead of the eighty-five hundred, you're gonna take the twenty plus another thir- another fourteen. So the difference is really six thousand dollars out of the budget either way you do it.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, because I think, because you're saying it would cost us sixty-five hundred to replace it, is that where you're getting that six thousand? That would have to come out?
No, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if you take the twenty out.
Yeah.
Jason was using the number of thirty-four thousand dollars. That means we gotta come up with fourteen thousand dollars somewhere, right?
Correct.
Okay. Jason's saying that in, in, in his example, let's borrow the money. And the, the payment on the loan would be roughly, I think he said eighty-five hundred dollars per year.
If I borrowed the whole thing. You just gave me a twenty thousand dollar down payment on it. So you, you, now, now I'm paying. Two to three times over for the piece of equipment. What, what I was looking at is if you finance thirty-four thousand dollars, or call it thirty-three thousand dollars. You pay twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a year, right?
That, that would come out of this.
And year one's payment comes out of this fund. I have no problem with that. Um, and that sort of goes back to my theory of, take part of it out of the fund, see if we can cover the rest of it through, if the grant comes through or some other part comes through. And you do it year for.
Well, basically, this is what I said in the beginning. Let's take the first year payment of a, of a financed, buy it. Finance it, lease purchase it, whatever you wanna call it. Take the first year payment out of the fund the way it's supposed to be. The people who voted for the fund at least will have an idea that we are using the fund and we're not using it all. And I do agree with Mr. Byron, I. That we don't know what's down. We do know we need a skid steer. We don't know how much more it's gonna snow. And I'd rather handle that problem separately than, than the imminent problem we have now. We, we have a problem now and I think we need to address it now. And I think the proper way to do it is to utilize that fund that we told the people. That we needed it for. And utilizing part of the money out of there is exactly what I think the intended purpose was.
So what you're saying, instead of using the twenty, you take the eighty-five hundred for the.
Correct, just take the.
Take the one year.
One year, one year payment out.
That, that, that I'm comfortable with. I'm just, I was concerned exhausting it without knowing what we're gonna.
No, no, only take the first year payment out.
All right, so how do we wanna, how do we wanna instruct the office to deal with this problem then? Or what do we wanna do to authorize them to start moving on it?
On the commotion that the, the board approved the replacement of the skid steer at the, um, transfer facility. And authorize the town administrator to execute or, um. Construct a financing method that would, um, probably go out over, what, three years? And authorize the withdrawal of the first year payment from the fund that the intended purpose is.
And what's, what's the amount of the dollar?
Let's say three even payments.
Three even payments, yeah, that.
That, I, you know, so we have a target, otherwise.
Should, could we say not to exceed ten thousand? Would that be safe?
No.
Okay, then, three even payments.
I, I'm sorry, just I don't have any quotes in hand, so I.
Well, that's what I was saying, I wish we could.
Bind myself on that.
Um, in a way, but we do need, the, the three even payments, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Because if we do three years, we won't exhaust the fund, we'll still have some money, and yet we use it for the intended purpose.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second. All right, discussion.
I still wanna know what the, if we can get a. I still wanna know what the, if we can get a minimized repair bill.
To what end though?
If we can repair it for twenty-five hundred bucks, I'd be glad to do that.
Repair bill is sixty-five hundred bucks, what do we think is involved in the repair? It's gonna be a rebuilt hydraulic system, I'm sure.
I don't know. It could be a brand new hydraulic system the guy's talking about dropping into the machine. I don't know, if there's a used one out there that works, maybe we could do that, I don't know.
So the.
All I'm saying is, we oughta do a due diligence, look at the options, decide what is the best way to go. I, I understand that we're probably, and if I had to put odds on it, it's probably seventy-thirty, we go with the new unit. I would fully support that.
How old is this unit?
Six years, so it's virtually.
No, no, this is. It's, it's at the end of. It's at the end of its life cycle and I.
Six.
Six years old.
And it's something, again, it's, it's the work. Absolutely necessary up there, and why are we, you know, let's not Mickey Mouse it.
Isn't that also being used by the, the trash more or less and the land, the, uh, roads and all?
No, it's.
Well, not the roads, yeah.
It's just everything up in there, yeah. But I mean, it's, it's the workhorse of that whole operation. Right, I mean, I, I don't wanna Mickey Mouse that.
With the average age of one used as much as that.
We got this, we got in this air to debate last, last year.
Pretty hard, yeah.
Yeah, we were pretty close to the lifespan for our use last year of the five to six years of, um, the type of use that it gets. Um, we had hoped that we put some money in last year to repair it and thought that that may get us through. Um, and it got us through the, it got us through another year.
Well, I, I think one, one other thing we have to look at is we know that it's a well-maintained machine, the maintenance is always done with it. You, you know what I mean, and it's.
And we knew this was coming.
Yeah, it's.
All right, we tried to plan for it last year.
Right.
Okay, further discussion?
Is it able to be used at all now?
No, it's gone, it got picked up on Friday.
So, so we're, we're renting the machine right now?
Renting one.
Yeah, yeah. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Stained? Motion carries four, one, zero. All right, Jason, you have the direction.
All right.
See if you can work on that trade-in number though. Cause actually, if you think about it, to, to, to Frank's point, if it's able to be repaired at a cheaper rate, the trade-in value should go up a little bit. They're deducting cause of trade.
Yeah, and, and I have no concern asking, um, you know, obviously if we can get it fixed for something le- significantly less than that, then, you know, I'll ask the question.
Is Chap- is Chapel a dealer for all three of those brands?
No, Chapel is the dealer for the brand we have for New Holland.
I thought they also had, um, not New Holland, they probably have, um.
Oh, they've got everything over there. They do a lot of state.
Yeah, and they do Cabota, I mean.
They do a lot of state in town now.
Yeah.
I saw you the last year when Dave got a loaner, well, this was being fixed in terms of it, Dave did not like the machine that he got.
It was a New Holland, it was a newer version, I think.
Because he felt it was.
He said it was a lot of plastic.
It, it was all plastic.
Probably is gonna get busted up.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and one of the, one of the prices we asked for from, um, New Holland relative to the others were the cost of the replacement of those plastic panels. Because one of the things that we wanna make sure we think about is, okay, you may not like the plastic panels on the New Holland, they may be prone to break. However, if the replacement cost, if, if you can break them six times before you get to your next one, you know, the next one up that's all metal, we need to bake that into our thinking somehow. So, you know, so we're trying to look at those pieces too, cause that was a conversation that Dave and I had today about, I said, I know you didn't like the New Holland, but let's try to figure those pieces out, so. Cause there's a lot of advantages potentially for us because our, our forks can come over and, you know, some of the other things we might have to replace if we go to a new line of equipment.
Now we have another one.
I mean, with that, this too, I think, you know, if you could investigate the, the grant, I guess.
Oh yeah, we're gonna fire that up again. I'm pretty comfortable that we will be eligible for that, but I can't, I can't count on it today. But yeah, um, they're, they're generally pretty good with us for that, so.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is citizen's request regarding interest abatement.
Yes, uh, we had a letter from another citizen looking for an interest abatement. Um, I think I, I shared the letter with you, uh, this appears to be basically a situation where, um, somebody was selling one property in Litchfield, moving to another property in Litchfield, um, in the frenzy of closing and shuffling, somehow the mid-year tax bill balance wasn't clear. So, um, when she got her tax bill in the fall, it included the full balance and penalty from the unpaid part in the summer. Uh, and this is all, for those of you that are playing along electronically, it is, it is, uh, the letter is attached on the site there too, so.
Do we have guidance from the tax collector?
Um, tax collector, um, gave me no recommendation for abatement.
Okay.
Has this person paid the, the, the due yet?
Uh, yeah, I believe they have, yes, cause if you look at, if you look at the second page, um, the, uh, it was, uh, down under the total amount due, it was a, uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you, you see there was a payment at the end of January and then the, um, interest, uh, interest and penalty is what's outstanding there.
Okay, I, I guess my take on this is, when somebody buys a new home, one of the first things you always do is find out how much oil is in the tank, or propane, or whatever you're using to heat your home. And you also end up finding about the tax bill. And when the owner moves out, you assume the tax bills from that day forward. And that's, that's, your attorneys tell you that all the time when you go through. And they give you, and, and all the paperwork tells you, it's even listed in the paperwork that you have, that you're given when you purchase a home.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure, when I read in the letter that the person wrote, that they weren't expecting to pay the additional taxes, that's all part and parcel of buying a new home.
Agreed.
I agree too. I agree. Make the motion to deny. Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Jason will write a letter from the office.
Yep. Yeah, and, and just to remind me, you get these because it is your discretion to waive, it is not the tax collector's.
Understood, but, but sometimes that they, they may have background that would be helpful in the decision.
Yeah, um, and the, the, the general rule of thumb, cause we, we haven't had too many, but, um, you know, I think when the tax collector feels there are certain circumstances, she'll send a note or, you know, I think once or twice she's been in here to talk to us.
Right, okay.
Uh, that's sort of your best barometer on that.
Okay.
All right, um, winter maintenance guide, one of the things we pulled off of my, uh, to-do list. Uh, Jack and I had, uh, done an NHMA webinar this fall and kind of both of us said, hey, we need to do a clearer winter maintenance guide, sort of explains what we're doing, clarifies what we're doing and also explains to the general public what's happening out there. Uh, and over the past few weeks, I managed to find a example that kind of, that hit on a lot of the points we like. Jack has edited it to match some of the, uh, the Litchfield conditions from the town from whom we borrowed it. Uh, wanted to run it past all of you, get your sense on it, and then, um, Jack could discuss being able to distribute this.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't require us to approve it, it's coming out of his office, right?
Right.
I'm assuming he's gonna wanna post on the website. I, I mean, I know this year a lot of questions have come up and I think it's probably a good idea to get it out to people. Does anybody have any?
I think this outstanding, I, it's. No, I, I don't, this is. I, I really like this because the average person really does not know, um, nor should they. Exactly what happens, they see the truck go by, they wonder where it is, they wonder when it's coming and when it's coming back. And I think this is a very, very informative and well-written, um, document, Mr. Hope.
Looking at my comments?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
Um, I think some of these are.
Are these grammatical?
No, and, no, I think that, that, there's, there's a comment I think that's very helpful about parking of cars on the streets is prohibited. Yes, we, that should probably be clear in there. Um, I, there's a notion about what distance from the, you know, how ro- wide is the town's right-of-way? Uh, we can put something in, I kind of gotta make it that a little soft cause it varies from place to place, but, um, you know, I, uh, we can put a sentence in, generally it's twenty-five feet from the center. Um, it may vary, you're welcome to check with town hall and we can give you an exact number or something like that, 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 I think that would be helpful.
Well, it's just.
Yep.
You got somebody putting up a mailbox, they don't know where to put it, so they put one in.
Um.
The plow will tell you where to put it later.
Oh, I know.
Oh yes, just come down to Kevin Street and you'll see.
Um, yeah, the, the comment about pipes and metal bars, um, we don't like basketball hoops because they're large and dangerous. Delineators are fine, we actually.
Knock them down.
No, but, but there actually is a recommendation or suggestion somewhere else in here, I think, that you're welcome to put up delineators.
But I'm talking about putting up.
Like bollard type, bigger?
I'm talking about putting up bars like this big I see when I walk around at times. And they bring the, their lawn right to the edge of the hot tub. And I can almost guarantee that's in the town's right-of-way.
Yep.
Um, so what does a plow do? The plow either ends up knocking them down or ends up to narrow the road if you wanna call it that, when they plow, that's all I'm saying. If, if it's not necessarily important, that's fine, I don't have a problem, I'm just giving you comments, that's all.
Okay, um, there was a question, we mentioned that after twenty degrees below Fahrenheit.
I would just change the word policy to process.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
It's just more of a, the way it's worked.
Yeah, I, I, that's, uh, that's fine, we can fix that, that was a, we, we, we went back and added something else in here. Uh, observe all winter parking bans, um, are general, ours is the general on-street ban.
I know, but when's it take effect during snowstorms or, or?
I, in our case, it's seasonal.
There is supposedly no parking in the wintertime, as I thought.
And that's fine.
Yeah, there is, but, but we'll clarify it again, nope, that's fine.
Yeah, we must, we must have a, a.
We do, we do, it's out, it's out there somewhere, so this is, yep, okay.
I think that looks like his last one, that looks like, yep.
Yep, okay.
That's all good, that's all good.
That's good, yeah, another, you know, another set of eyes helps on this.
I mean, winter is halfway over, right, but can we get this cleaned up?
We'll, we'll get this produced and get it out, so. Um, you know, like.
Keyword halfway. Yeah, don't I wish we were halfway.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to be hopeful. All right, so that's it, the winter maintenance guide, it's nice work. Um, old business, the detail ordinance, which we had a first read several weeks back. This is supposed to be our final and hopefully approval.
Um, if you recall, this was ordinance that we had put together, um, clarifying uh, where and how and the rationale and support for, uh, police details.
I don't see any comments, so it looks like it's. But any questions? Adjustments, changes? About a motion?
Some movements to chairman to adopt the detail ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Jason, when you, um.
We'll get a nice copy up for you to.
Just sign?
Sign, yep.
Put it in next week's folder. Okay, national, uh, Nashua, National, Nashua Regional Solid Waste District.
Did I put that? Nope, that's not, did I, I already covered, sorry, did I put that in the wrong place? Oh, sorry, that's me. Um, wrong, we'll go back to the agenda instead. I, I put the wrong thing there. I, really, I wanna talk about the Penachuck rate case. Sorry, completely, completely unrelated item, that's, happens, we have two documents going at once, you guys already took care of the solid waste district.
I was wondering why I was in there, cause I know we signed him going.
Yeah, no, sorry, sorry, um, perhaps I moved pages around. Penachuck rate case. Um, I wanted to check back in on this, there's another session upcoming at the end of February, um, for which, you know, we would in, be sending counsel to, and I wanted to reconfirm the board's interest in continuing to be an intervenor in this case. Uh, two thousand thirteen, we spent fourteen hundred and thirty dollars being in, being a party to it. So, before we send counsel off to another day of hearings, uh, I wanna make sure we're still there. I mean, I, I think we entered this with a concern about the price going up and the impact on this community. On the other hand, we weren't entering into it with a sort of substantive issue of we're concerned about this specific item or this seems too high, or this technical report seems to be overstating or understating things. So, I, before I commit more resources, I wanna make sure we're, you're okay with me telling counsel, go ahead or no, pull back.
So what do we, what did we spend last year?
Spent fourteen hundred and thirty dollars.
If I knew the outcome of the case, it'd be a lot easier to be able to tell you.
You know what the, well, I mean, I, I hate to be cynical, but you know the outcome of the case, the outcome of the case will be the rate increase more or less that they've asked for. Um, unless there is some incredible insight of, uh, technical deficiency, which really has not turned up anyplace yet, um, their first, uh.
What does counsel say?
Counsel's not seeing a lot of.
They already said that too.
Right, I mean, when we went into this.
There's no defend, that we really can't defend our position.
Right.
They're seemingly very defendable what they're asking for. So, there is no other technical steps for us to do at this point, I mean, other than continue to be an intervener, there's nothing we can, there's no paperwork we can fill out, there's nothing that we gotta submit or testimony that we can do to change the direction.
Not, not, not at this point, I mean, we can, I mean, basically by being an intervenor, you can continue to monitor. Now, the degree is how much you wanna pay counsel a hundred and seventy dollars an hour to monitor it versus going through the publicly released documents from the PUC. I mean, my sense is that, you know, um, there, this is not a fly-by-night approach, so is, there's probably disagreement somewhere at the margin, there always are with this kind of number, but anything substantive, I'm not seeing it.
So what is the? What's the board's pleasure then?
If, if we're not, um, gonna derive, um, financial benefit for taxpayers, um, I don't know that it's wise to continue in intervenor status, spending the money when we have a pretty good idea that it's only for observer status, basically is what we're doing. So I'll move to, um, cease our activity as far as being intervenors in the case.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion?
I think that is the wrong thing to do. Um, your motion would take and eliminate us as interveners. Just because we're interveners doesn't mean we have to participate in the meeting in the same fashion. I would strongly suggest that we continue as interveners, which allows us to keep the door open, should there be something that comes up for us that we want to do, but at the same time, we can pull back on the attendance of counsel at the meeting as that is our. as that is our prerogative, and it is, does not affect us as interveners.
So, if that's the case.
That was actually, if, the direction that I was suggesting be the first step, was let's pull back on assigning counsel to spend so much time on it, but maybe keep the door open just in case.
So, uh.
Well, I wish that was made clear
Sorry.
in the beginning. So I will withdraw my motion.
And I'll second.
So, new motion is, um, that we remain as interveners, but request counsel to not be involved.
Remain as interveners, only, uh.
So, are you, is Frank making that?
With no expense.
Let, let me explain to you what I think I would suggest counsel do. Unless counsel knows of something, and can advise us of such, that she needs to, or he needs to attend meeting, I would say, don't go. But I would also say that counsel should take, after the meeting, do a due diligence, quick view on the paperwork, if there's anything that shows up, fine, flag it and let us know, if not, then we just continue that way.
That, well, that's great, then, we don't need a motion for anything.
I don't, I don't.
Be, ooh.
We're not changing our status unless people want to go out.
Okay, if we're not, that's what I'm saying. We're not changing our status, we're just directing our legal team to sit, to sit back. So I'm okay with that.
Just to monitor the situation, and see if there's anything.
So why don't we just leave it alone?
That's the board's prerogative.
Yep.
Okay.
I, as long as you're fine with that, you know, I mean, I, we were asked, hey, do you want me to go in? And I said, hey, this is a good point for us to check back in. My own preference was gonna be pull back a little bit, but I didn't feel that that was my decision to make.
So the board's, the board's opinion or direction is to pull back, stay monitoring, let's not remove our status, leave our status the way it is.
Okay.
All right, next is, um.
Let me just hit on a couple.
How do those other towns that are in it feel about it?
We're the only interveners. We're the only town that's intervening.
Okay.
So, I guess in a backdoor way, that kind of answers your question.
Yeah. Yeah.
But then again, Hudson wouldn't intervene anyway, simply because.
They're part.
Right, exactly.
Right.
They're home.
Yeah, and, and, and to be fair, we are one of the larger customers of Penachuk.
We, we, as I recollect, looking at the data, we were the third largest.
Yeah, I'm gonna say number two or number three, yeah.
Third largest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Number one was Nashua.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, energy, energy pricing?
Energy pricing, um, just wanted to reaffirm that, we did this back in January now. Uh, we signed our new contract for energy, um, electricity provision, nine-month contract, it'll be renewed in November. Uh, our contract price is seven point eight five cents per kilowatt, lower than any other pricing we received in the bid process, and below the approved PS and H rate for, starting in January, of nine point two three cents.
How much did it go up, percent?
Um, I don't, I'm, sorry, I don't have the percentage in front of me. Um, our, our contract, our contract went up, I want to say we were at six-something to seven, eight, five. Um, we've been lagging, we have, because we've been buying through this cooperative the past two years, we've been well behind the PS and H increases. Um, good deal for us, um, the, the expectation is, based on, on our prior year numbers, they, um, the quick calculation, uh, was that we'll save about thirty-six hundred hours over the nine-month contract period, as compared to if we had been with PS and H. Um, I think, the group, uh, we do this through a group organized through NRPC. Um, they've done most of the, which is wonderful, because they do all the outreach, they do all the paperwork, they do all the bids, they do, they bring in the people to do all the analysis. Um, the group as a whole, through the region, is saving about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's a really good, it's a decent-sized group, so it's been very good for us. Um, and we'll be back in November to do it again.
Oh, boy.
Um.
It'll probably Zonka send.
Nah, it actually, there's a, the rationale for doing it that way is, if, to have, to have people bid with another winter ahead of them, they charge a higher price through the whole season, to offset the unknown of the future winter. Part of the reason for doing a nine-month contract is, it stops pre-winter, so they don't, so they'll have better numbers for winter expectations for the new bid. Uh, yeah, I've learned more about this than I anticipated, because, you know, this is, this is why we did nine months. That's the rationale, is, it's the winter timing thing, so.
Especially this winter.
Yep, um, we got information from, uh, Department of Revenue. Uh, they do our annual, um, uh, review of our assessment ratio. Our assessment ratio for two thousand thirteen is a hundred and three point seven percent. Uh, it's down slightly from last year, that's, um, that is, um, that median ratio is what we use to adjust property values for abatements, um, to adjust the overall value in town. You'll recall that the test we have to meet is, our value should be between ninety percent and a hundred and ten, ten percent of market. So, we're still.
In the middle there.
We're still right, we're still right where we should be with those numbers. And again, remember, in two thousand fifteen, they all get reset anyway, is that the last year of the revow. Um, got a question, uh.
This is the diesel gas?
Yeah, it is, yep, diesel gas buying.
So Frank brought, Frank, Frank raised the question now.
Yep, uh, Frank raised a question, um, last week, going through accounts payable, uh, regarding billing from fuel company, and how to insure us, a company that has a ten-day pay discount, how to make sure that we get that through our system. Uh, really impacts just one department, only one department is buying diesel from this company right now. Uh, department head and I talked about it, and I think we have a plan to manage it, to get it through the process. Um, and I'll keep an eye on those transactions, and if we need to do anything more dramatic, we will.
Jason, why, uh, why wouldn't we just shift it to credit card payment? I, I know I've done that in my own, in my own personal finances, just because it's one bill to pay, and it's done, it's easier. We have a credit card, why can't we just have a credit card that they discharge to, so we get, I'm assuming we'll still get that discount?
Yep.
Um, and just filter it through the, because that'll make it, that'll make it lag thirty days anyway, from a payer perspective. Especially a charge like that, I mean, even, I wouldn't even think, even, even gas, fuel, if they'll take credit card for fueling up the highway department station, why doesn't run that all through the credit card, it's all transactions to cop, and we don't have to cut a check? You know, we cut one check, we cut, well, it's electronic transfer for the bank, I think, to, to the credit card company, right?
We, we, we.
Right, yeah, you don't, yeah, we still, yeah, let, I will look and see, um, I, this, you know, this vendor may be fine to do that.
But Frank brought it up, I never even thought about it, I mean, I didn't know, like you said, in my own personal finances, I do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to look at that, um, I can't say it makes sense for, um, the other vendor. There's not a discount from the vendor we buy our gasoline from that way.
It's only Fred Fuller, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and I, I'm just thinking, I'm, for me, it's a paperwork thing, right, it's coming into one bill versus having three different bills, and, and again, may not, it's minim, it's minimal work effort, I, I get that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I think in this case, that may be one of the other options we look at, too. I just need to look at, I just need to look at timing, cash flow, and amount, to make sure that we're not bumping up against any thresholds.
And as far as what you've worked with the department head, is the billing, because the billing comes through here and received, is it going for his approval, and then we're paying it? And is there a possibility of missing that ten-day window?
No, there's usually not, because it's all, it's all through this building. I think there's, I think there's just have been some crossed wires elsewhere in processing things.
Okay.
As well, so, um, I think we can fix it. Um, and I guess, what I look at is, those are the kinds of things that, you know, I'm happy to get the question, um, when you look through, you know, pass them along, come up with something. I'm not sure that they always will be, it requires a full board-level discussion for, but the other set of eyes on that, asking, I mean, we see it all the time, and don't even think about some of this stuff, so, you know, let me know that kind of stuff, when you see it.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's a first statement, too, I, I think the challenge is, is that ha- not having this discussion means it may be overlooked in the informational section, if, if people aren't following along at times, so. Um, but, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
This is something that is, it did, did operations, that is being well-maintained, and.
But sometimes, sometimes we need to head the heads up, and I realize that, you know, we, particularly, you know, you come in on alternate Mondays and look through stuff, and often, I'm not here, you're kind of coming in at scattered points. Um, sometimes that other.
People can come and visit you more often.
You all could, because you're welcome to come visit anytime you want, but, you know, the other set of eyes is often helpful, so if you see something, you got a question, pass it along.
Frank, does that help clarify?
No, you're shaking my head that I don't want to visit him anymore.
I know, I visited way too much already, and I already talked to him, I don't want to learn anymore.
No, that's, that's fine, all I was looking to do, and when I asked for it to be on the agenda, was not to make an issue of it for you, but was to make a, a discussion of the board, what can we do to try and
Yeah.
see if we can save the town some money, that's all.
Yep.
I mean, I'd like to see us go, I mean, and I, you know, again, this is municipal accounting and everything else, I know there's all these debt, all these checks and balances, but wouldn't it be nice to be able to pay a lot more of our bills electronically, and get it paid quicker? And potentially have the savings, if there are savings to be had, um, but.
Yeah, the, the tradition of receipts, manifests, and all of the other dual and triple control systems we have, make it tougher for us to do some of those.
I think that checks in, that's still there, when you're looking at another, you know, we're looking at a single bill with all this transaction versus, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, it is, it is, it, 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 I, I will tell you, it makes paying that bill a delight, so. Um, ha- having drawn the short straw to do accounts payable, the week that we do the credit card bill a few times. So.
You have an email.
Anything?
Yep.
I have an email?
Oh, he does.
Oh, um, anything else, Jason, from your, your end?
Uh, that's all I have, unless anybody else had any other questions, um, there were many things piled up there under the informational report, so what happens when you go that long between meetings.
Um, the only thing I would, I guess, um, looking where we're at right now, with the last snowstorm and all that, I know that we've had been close with regards to our budget. Do we have a number how we finished up two thousand thirteen yet? I know the books are already starting to be closed, but is everything kind of evened out yet?
For final, final for the year? Um, let me get, I, I'll have something better for you next week, or next meeting, I can give you a better number.
One of the auditors come in to help close?
Uh, they haven't fixed a date yet, so.
Okay, that's, I would assume it marks in time.
I would assume March, April timeframe.
All right, moving on, second report. Anybody have anything in the report?
I do, yeah, just real quick, this weekend coming up, there's, uh, Winter Fest, starts Friday night through Sunday, so would, uh, welcome all residents to come and have some fun.
Okay, yeah, it should be a good time, there's chili chick, there's chili cook-off again this year, there's all kinds of activities. It's bigger and better than last year, and last year was awesome, so, I think it'll be fun.
Weather is so important, was that?
Okay, Saturday, they're talking a little, little snow.
Well, it's, it's gonna snow Wednesday and Thursday, so it may have some good snow on the ground.
Yeah.
There's snow down there now, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay, Mr. Lamir?
I'm also.
Mr. Byron?
Um, I will not be at the meeting of the selectmen on the twenty-fourth of February, I will be missing.
Hopefully enjoying something somewhere.
And also, uh, there's a possibility that I may not be at the meeting of March tenth, because I will be having some outpatient surgery.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to say thank you to the public for the beautiful plaque. You didn't need to do it, you could have given the money to the Salvation Army. Made me a cardboard one, that's what I was thinking, you know, very frugal. And, uh, I certainly appreciate it, all the cards, the calls, the food, flowers. I've gotten so many calls and notes and all, so, I'm gonna miss it, I'll tell you. It was the hardest thing I ever did, I think, was to write the letter, but you have to do it, you have to do it. I'm on my road to recovery.
You're looking stronger and stronger every day.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have less than a, I got, second report, Budget Committee, obviously, we met after the deliberative with school, I was at the deliberative for the school this past weekend. Um, it was about thirty-five people there, I believe. Um, one more, they, there was a couple of, uh, amendments to their operating budget from the floor that increased the bottom line, um, focused around transportation for the most part. And otherwise was somewhat uneventful. Um, this is less than a second, it's more of a technical report to everybody. Uh, if ever, if, if board members, you had authorized the replacement of the surveillance systems for the Town Hall, and the voice recorders for the nine-one-one system. It's one report that that system has been completely installed, updated, and functionalized of last Friday. So, that's all done. So you'll see those final invoices coming out. Um, and probably, I would assume, I would assume by that next meeting, they'll pass the system, I'm.
Yeah.
We're talking to the vendor about some cost changes, because there were some other things, but otherwise, it went really well, and it's, like I said, it's functioning. So, and obviously, you saw the new reader board up front?
Yeah.
Or the sign, electronic sign, that went in over the weekend. That's it. Okay, there was no, any, there was no items moved from consent, and there was no other business.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, we adjourned, our next meeting will be February twenty-fourth, which is school vacation, so hopefully, people will, will join, but at six o'clock here at Town Hall. Have a great day, have a great evening, everybody.
What do we have to do to get this thing fixed, or?